There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the, the meeting is called to order for the Board of Equalization prior to our Lincoln City Council meeting today. In accordance with, in accord with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Law is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Welcome to the meeting today of Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my turn?
The Order of Business for the Board of Equalization is as follows. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today, we are here to equalize the assessments for several such districts. The College View Maintenance Business Improvement District, the Havelock, Havelock Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, the North Twenty-seventh Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, the South Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, the University Place Maintenance Business Improvement District, and the West O Street Business Maintenance Business Improvement District. The land described in each one of the districts are benefited by the improvements in the particular districts. The costs of these services are paid for by the city from its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited properties and reimburse its revolving funds. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the city for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization as we are now. The clerk will read a description of each district individually. After the district is read, a rep, Madam Clerk, do you read those now, or do we, do I continue? Go ahead, okay. After the district is read, a representative from the Urban Development Department will come forward to make a brief statement about the district. Then anyone wishing to testify may come forward. We ask that if you do come forward to please state your name and sign the sheet at the podium. Clerk, would you please read the first item?
We will need an election of Chair.
Is there any nominations for Chair?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Tammy Ward to be the Chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second?
Been seconded by McGinnis, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. College View Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extended from South Forty-eighth Street between Calvert Streets and Pioneer's Boulevard. Havelock Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from Havelock Avenue from Cornhusker Highway on the west to Sixty-fourth Street on the east. North Twenty-seventh Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extended from North Twenty-sixth Street on the west to North Twenty-eighth Street on the east and from the center line of O Street on the north to Fair Street on the south, primarily including those properties abutting North Twenty-seventh Street. South Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from South Street from the alley west of Ninth Street east to Nineteenth Street. University Place Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending along North Forty-eighth Street from Colby Street on the south to the half block north of Adams Street on the north and along Saint Paul Avenue from North Forty-seventh Street to North Fiftieth Street. West O Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally along West O Street from Third Street on the east to Homestead Expressway on the west and including the property abutting the north and south sides of West O Street right of way.
Good afternoon, I'm Ron Kane with the Urban Development Department, and I am the staff person who prepared the proposed assessments before you this afternoon. And they, these are all based on expenditures from January first of two thousand and twenty-two to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding those assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, for being here and for your work on these. Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Kane? Any comments? Okay, all right. Seeing none, we appreciate you being here, thank you. Is there anyone present that would like to testify on these items? Anyone present to testify on these items? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
We can have vote on these. I need a motion?
Uh, move to approve, Beckius.
Second?
Seconded by Washington, further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Great. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the session of the Board of Equalization.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Is there, seconded by McGinnis? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
We are adjourned from the Board of Equalization meeting. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into the Lincoln City Council meeting of May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Again, in accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act back, posted back of the chamber by the northwest door. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed under the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including your address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect your security of any such individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating your name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business on today's council meeting, May first, is our consent agenda, Sections one and Sections two.
Is there anyone present to testify on these items? Items one and items two? Item one or item two, seeing none, let's move on.
We can have vote on our consent agenda. Item two A was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez, further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section four, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling item four A and four B together. Item four A is Application of Event Tent LLC Doing Business As Event Tent For A Class I Liquor License Located At Fifty-seven Hundred North Thirty-third Street And The Related Manager Application Of Michael H. Nguyen.
Is there anyone present to testify on these applications? Items four A and four B? Items four A and four B, okay. Please come on forward, sir, thank you. Thank you, Investigator Parker. Welcome.
I swear you in, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Michael Nguyen. Um, the address I'm doing business at is Fifty-seven Hundred, uh, North Thirty-third Street.
Thank you. Could you tell us a bit about your application and your business?
Um, yeah, I'm applying for the liquor license for my business that I'm planning to open soon. Um, we're gonna be an event venue here in Lincoln, um, on the north side of town, um, in the North Twenty-seventh area. Um, we're opening a venue that can host all kind of events, um, up to a hundred people, so, um, pretty small to midsize, anything from, uh, um, uh, any kind of meetings, birthday parties, um, baby showers, anything small like that. I'm planning to have more affordable options since I had my wedding last year and I paid a lot of money for mine, so that gave me the idea of opening my own. So, yeah, um, we have some amenities, we have our stage, um, surround sound system, we have a bar area as well, so that's just some of the things that I ha, that I have now.
Sounds pretty great, and congratulations on your recent marriage.
Thank you.
Are there questions for our applicant? Any questions or comments? All right, thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Yes, best wishes. We can move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling item four C, Application Of Corn Coast Brewing LLC Doing Business As Corn Coast Brewing For An Addition Of An Outdoor Area Measuring Approximately Sixty-five Feet By Ten Feet At Fourteen Thirty-three Dahlberg Drive, Suite A Through C.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item, on this application? Item four C? Corn Coast Brewing? Okay, we can move on, Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling item four D and E together. Item four D is Application Of Cobal Inc. Doing Business As Cobal Mexican Restaurant For An Addition Of An L-Shaped Outdoor Area Measuring Approximately Sixty-five Feet By Twenty-one Feet At Forty-seven Forty-seven Pioneer's Boulevard And The Related Manager Application Of Cynthia R. Lopez Cruz.
Yes, please come forward.
I swear you in. Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, I swear.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Cynthia Lopez and I'm doing business at Forty-seven Forty-seven Pioneer's Boulevard. We are trying to incorporate our patio since it has been closed for a couple of years now.
Okay, time to get back open?
Yes, yes.
Understand, great, thank you. Any questions for our applicant? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we can move on.
I'll be calling item four F, Application Of Kinkater Brewing Company LLC Doing Business As Beer House Mashiner For An Addition Of An Indoor Area Measuring Approximately Forty-eight Feet By Thirty-two Feet At One-Fifty-One North Eighth Street.
Is there anyone here present to testify on this application? Item four F? Item four F? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling item four G, Application Of Kinkater Brewing Company LLC Doing Business As Sideshow Spirits For A Special Designated License To Cover Two Outdoor Areas Measuring Approximately Seventy-five Feet By Fifty Feet And Seventy Feet By Fifty-five Feet At Sixteen Thirty P Street On June third, two thousand and twenty-three From Eight A M To Eleven P M.
Is there anyone present to testify on this application? Item four G? Anyone present? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, may I? Uh, seeing no one else coming forward to discuss any issues related to these liquor resolutions, I'd like to move approval of four A through four G.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes Section four of our agenda, we shall move on to Section five, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll be calling item five A, Approve The Name Of The Ticket Office Of Pine Wood Bowl As The Tom Lorenz Box Office.
Good afternoon, Council, Maggie Stuckey Ross, Director of Parks and Recreation. Really pleased to be here today. This is a really wonderful opportunity to honor a servant, a civil servant in our midst and recognize him for all that he has done for our community. Tom Lorenz was the driving force behind the development of the Pine Wood Bowl and recently the Pine Wood Bowl Concert Series. Thanks to his tireless efforts, Pine Wood Bowl is now a nationally recognized venue drawing popular artists across all genres of music. Tom is also a true friend of the Parks Department. He continually worked to balance the interests of economic development and park maintenance, our favorite thing. His relationships throughout the community and country really put Lincoln on a map as our national entertainment destination. Our department staff valued Tom as a colleague and a friend. This, before you today, is the approval of the naming of the ticket office at Pine Wood Bowl. It's consistent with our recently adopted policy regarding naming, which provides that parks, areas of parks and park facilities may be named after individuals, businesses and other entities in recognition of significant civic accomplishments related to the department activities. Tom's service to the city of Lincoln generally, and honestly, the Parks Department specifically, far exceeds this standard. At its April thirteenth meeting, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended moving forward with this proposal. Um, our staff has also been coordinating with Tom's family, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize that Tom's wife, Terry, and his son, Kyle, are both with us today, and we appreciate you being here and thank you for letting us do this. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe in your packet as an image of the, the sign that we hope to put up. We've ordered it and our hope is that it's up before the, the first concert that will happen later on this month. But we're, we're really excited to do this and think it'll make the entrance and the opening front door of the Pine Wood Bowl even more significant. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions for Director Stuckey Ross? Any comment? Yes, Councilman Beckius?
Um, no questions, Director, but, um, just wanted to stay, to say that this was, uh, this recognition for Tom is the, um, very least that the city can do to, um, give proper recognition to a man who gave our community so much and to recognize him forever for the gifts that he gave to Lincoln. So, um, thank you, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing Tom's name up there.
Councilman, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam. I just wanted to add, I know that the Parks Department is completely supportive of this and was glad to be able to be part of the conversation at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, but we received a wonderful letter of support from former Director Lynn Johnson. I just wanted to, to mention that the, the Director Johnson, former Director Johnson, um, really was impressed by all of the work and the learning that he said he had from Tom himself, and he said that Tom had a vision, uh, and really the passion for the potential of Pine Wood Bowl, and as you stated, it has made that park, uh, and that venue a real, a wonderful place to enjoy live music. And, um, I just wanted to read his wholehearted support
Yes.
for the naming of the box office, and I look forward to many a wonderful evening again at the Pine Wood Bowl.
Yes.
Any other comments from the council? All right. Thank you so much, Director.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you to the Lorenz family for being here today. Thank you very, very much. All right, Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
Is there anyone else here to testify on this item?
That's the next item, sir, yep.
I'll be calling item five B, Accepting And Approving The Report Of New Impending Claims Against The City For April first Through April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
This is all new to me. My name's Clayton Schwartz, my address is Fifty-four Hundred Rosebrier Court. And it concerns, uh, Bill LaScoon, well, they had, uh, the Water Department had a bad fitting, I found out, and I used to always see, I live on the end of a cul-de-sac, and for years, about three years, I'd see a square white truck had to do something with cleaning it out, the sewer line. Well, there, they had a fitting that my drainage hooks onto, and their fitting, they found out after three years that it was crushed. So each year around the holidays, it took me that long, I'm single, so it took a while. But it'd plug up and then I'd have to call somebody, road a router to come out, go through it, and then that'd last another year. When they did finally figure out they had a crushed fitting there, the day they replaced it, I haven't had a problem whatsoever. I got an estimate on the damage by my back door, which would be the, let's see, the west side of my house has dropped like an inch to inch and a half, and that's created the water when it couldn't get through. Two, Epp was one of them, and another grounds, I forget the name of the other one, was from out of town, I wanted to get a variety. And they both come to the conclusion that that water, and they even stated in their estimate for different types of damage, if it can't get through, it flows back along your pipe, and so doing it hauled dirt away from my house or my footings. My footings have dropped that inch to an inch and a half, and that's causing, I wanted, I wanted to know where all the dirt was going, 'cause you could see a V going through from my house to the other side of the street, and also it took dirt away from the other side, that neighbor. Anyway, they... Oh, and then it pushes up my basement floor, that dirt that was moving under the footings is oozing up again, under the floor, so that's why it costs so much, and it's pushing the floor of the house, that side, all over the place, and... Oh, uh, did I say after they did fix their fitting, I didn't have to have anybody come out, road a route, anymore? So that's why the floor, the concrete, now it's coming up, there's sort of like a little room there, it's tiled and it's got, uh, oh, I, my laundry room is what it is, and I keep a refrigerator in there, and it's getting bubbles on it, and it's just pushing up the floor. My, the assessors used to come out, they all agreed that between the two east slab and the west slab then, the difference was about a half inch, but in between that, it's still pushing up.
One minute remaining?
Uh, I, I didn't know I was gonna be here, I was just checking because I'd left a message Friday, I was down here to see if I could postpone this so I could have all the dates for you written down, because one affects the other one. And I'd be glad to come back anytime or give, you have to see it, it's awful. So far, the, the water doesn't come into the basement, though. It's just dirt, it's just being pushed up.
Okay.
Sorry I didn't do a very good job.
You did, no, you're doing great, you're fine, sir. Well, let's see if the council has any questions, if you're finished, you have how much time, Madam Clerk, it's just about less than a minute, I think, but...
Yes, about seventeen seconds.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Schwartz? Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schwartz, thanks for coming forward. So, to help me better understand, there was a, your sewage line connected to the city sewage line, and they recently replaced that fitting because it was broken?
Of theirs, yes, it wasn't my fitting. They, they even come out, I, the gentleman, I forget his name, it's written down at home, but he did come out when I, uh, another neighbor of mine said that they, one year, they was digging right across the street, so that's when I went to the Water Department and asked him, I was curious then, what they had done there, and they said that, that it was a crushed fitting there they found, and they replaced it, but nobody told me, my dad was sick back then, 'cause this happened, it didn't happen overnight. It goes clear back to probably around sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Nineteen is when an assessor told me to get a estimate on the replacement or the cost to repair. My rooms were starting to creak, and then the creek would leave from here and show up here, and it, right now, it's constantly, it took from the west wall, three foot in, when they laid the subfloor, they must have went to about two and a half to three foot from the edge of the house on the south side, and when it did that, I don't know, it's really making, uh, it popped all along there, it must have pulled all the nails loose.
So the, the city replaced the connection?
Yes.
And that caused your basement floor to, to bubble up?
Yes.
The city's effort to replace the connections, what you're saying, that's, what, what the city did caused the floor to move, that's, that's the, I'm having trouble connecting the dots there.
Yes, because the moisture, when it can't get through, it'll follow back along my drain pipe, and when it done that, it took other dirt from that side of the house, my front step, there's no dirt under there, I used to dump sand in it those two years or so, and you can stick a four-foot broomstick in there and swish it back and forth, you have to come out and sit, see it to believe it. And the assessors, there, I have pictures of it at home, and I could be glad to bring them down and give them to somebody, or they could come out, look, I mean, I ain't kidding. I mean, I ain't kidding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Other questions for Mr. Schwartz? Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schwartz, again, thank you. So just so I can understand this, you said that some of this, your cleaning out your drain was something you did every year until the city replaced their fitting? And was that in the last year or so, or was that a couple of years ago?
No, the, let's see, in 19 was when the assessors told me to get an estimate on damage. So Epp come out then, so. It started back in probably 16, 2016, because those were the years that it plugged up for me. So it would have had to been in 2016.
All right, thank you. And I know that you said that you could be, that you weren't completely prepared today. But you've been very helpful in my understanding. I'm just trying to put everything together.
It is complicated because one affects, you know, like the assessors and the Water Department. And that's why the, in 19 was when I went to, I, everything was more or less happening then. So I disputed the taxes. I went down to Antelope, yeah, Antelope Park. They had a setup there where you'd bring all your pictures. I brought everything in and showed them, and they said every, the guy that I talked to, I showed him the pictures, and he says, well, this sure gives me a lot to work with. And that, I think out there, they recorded your speech, too. And everybody, I've always brought these pictures in, but assessors, not one of them ever told me that it was the Water Department, but one does work with, affects the other, put it that way.
And when did you file your claim with the city? Did you file your claim with the city recently?
No, let's see, when was it?
Damages.
It looks like perhaps you submitted a claim in February of 2022. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, probably, officially, because everybody knew it, and I figured. And then Doug, who was the head appraiser?
We had spoken of Rob Ogden is whom you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah, he was out. But then when he got defeated, why then, all the information was basically lost. And I thought everybody knew it then, because soon as I had the Water Department come out and showed me, he wanted to make sure it was him, you know? Yep, he says, I think years ago, I think there might have been a tree there or something. I don't know. But whatever it was, we lost the dirt.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schwartz, the council? Director Elliott, could, do you have information on this that you could share with us, please? Thank you. You can stay, you can stay up here, Mr. Schwartz, if you would like. We're going to ask, Director Elliott's in charge of the Water Department as well.
Am I done now, or?
For now, yes. But we might have other questions. You may have a seat. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
So there are kind of two issues here, the wastewater line, which is what's at issue, and then the torque claim filing is a separate issue. So the first one was back in April 24th, 2013, so nine years ago, almost 10, actually 10 years ago now. Time flies. We did go out and replace a portion of the sewer main in this area. And at that time, there was a new tap put on at 5400 and 5401 Rosebrier Court. That was just part of the main, the sewer main replacement at that time. It was determined at that time that there were two breaks in the actual city pipe at that time. So we went in in 2013, fixed it. Since then, we've done annual, almost annual, give or take a few months inspections. We did a TV inspection in 2017 of the entire line. Everything looked fine, the taps and all of that looked fine. The replacement was not due to any crushed or crusted taps. It was just the actual pipe that had a break in it. The TV inspection in 2017 doesn't show any crushed or crusted taps or breaks in that area. We do have our standard tree root issues, nothing out of the abnormal. It's minor to moderate over the last 10 years on the root issues. And we've just maintained those with our normal, either the root foam or the roto rooter, essentially is what we've used the last couple, five to 10 years, it looks like. So we don't see any damage. The damage that Mr. Schwartz is experiencing, we don't believe is from the 2013 work or anything that has shifted. We're not seeing any shifting or new cracks or anything like that in our wastewater line at this point.
Councilman Beckyef?
So from, Director Elliott, if I'm understanding correctly, from 2013 onward, your inspections from 2013 forward have not revealed any damage to the city line or anything that would impact this particular homeowner from any sort of defect or crushed fitting or anything of that sort?
Correct.
You haven't discovered that since 2013?
There is nothing that we have seen that indicates any kind of damage or anything that would cause any sort of backups or any other issues.
Okay. And do you know when the last time that was inspected by chance?
So our normal inspection, that's the wrong one.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
Nope, I have it right here. I just got to shuffle through all the pages. So the last time we were out was October 19th of 2021. We did, we applied the root control chemical, so just the foam that we put in, and that the roots at that time appeared to be small, minor, and no damage or issues indicated at that time.
And you put the foam in because the roots are not big enough at that point in time in order to do any other service?
Correct. And with the chemical, it's to prevent them from growing for about a nine to 12-month period. So to just kind of keep it at bay and make sure we're not having any additional growth.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Of course. Any other questions for Director Elliott? Comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, we can move on. So Mr. Schwartz, before we do, Mr. Schwartz, how this will work is unless a councilperson will remove your item from our report, that is the only way that your claim will be removed from this report. Otherwise, it will still be denied by the city. Does that make sense to you? You can come up to the microphone if you would like. So when we go back to vote on this issue in a little bit, unless one of us decides to pull your item from the claims report, it will still be denied. Your claim in the amount of $39,000 and $39,645, unless a councilperson makes a motion to remove it when we go to vote on it, it will still be denied.
Well, it sure wasn't my fault.
Right, I understand. But that's...
That's okay if somebody else does sloppy work or doesn't find, if they would have found it sooner. I didn't hear her. Did she say how long that they'd been looking for that problem?
They have treated it many, over many years, since 2016, I believe.
2013.
13, 2013. So we're going to proceed with the next, we're actually going to vote on all these items next. So unless a councilperson decides to, yes, Councilman McGinnis?
I have a quick question for Mr. Schwartz. Did you say you had more dates, more information that you would like to bring in front of this?
I got a whole stack of stuff, but...
Okay.
I'd have my true dates than betters, basically. But it sure wasn't my fault. As soon as they fixed their crushed, that crushed fitting, all my problems went away, except my dirt never come back.
And is this the same information you shared with the city attorney's office when you filed a claim?
I'm kind of hard to hear.
Is all the dates and information you have, is this the same information you shared with the city attorney's office when you filed your claim? Did you give them all of your information?
Over the years, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, all right.
So now...
We're going to go into the voting session next, Mr. Schwartz. So there may be a motion by one of the council members on your claim. We just don't know. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on, please.
We have item 5C, a resolution expressing the intent for a final property tax request of no more than $92,369,588 for the city's 2023-24 fiscal year.
Is there anyone present that would like to testify on this item?
Good afternoon, Lynn Fisher. Would you like my address?
That'd be great, Lynn, please. Thank you.
Our office in Lincoln is at 3544 South 48th Street, Suite A. Represent Great Place Properties. We're a property management company and a property investor company here in town. And so it's a real simple matter. If you all are serious about affordable housing in Lincoln, you'll do everything you can to keep property taxes as low as possible. When we have an increase in owner costs, property taxes being a major part of those, we have no choice but to pass those costs on to tenants in the form of higher rents. And that's true with every expense that we have to deal with. But property taxes are one of those things that, of course, you have some control over. So I would ask you to please keep the mill levy down to a point where your budget is maintained as it is already passed and voted on so that we can realize the least amount of increase in property taxes so we can help our tenants to keep their rents as low as possible. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lynn. Questions from the council? Councilman McGinnis?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for coming down. When you know there's going to be an increase, you know your new values. You may have protested some of them, maybe you haven't, I don't know. But once you know your new values, you know you're going to probably see some type of increase. And that's usually based off of what, we don't know what our budgets are at this point. Do you, if it's a significant enough increase, would you start to pass it along ahead of time?
We already have, yes.
Oh, okay.
And dealing and listening to and talking with other people in our industry, that is a practice that is very important to anticipate increases. And so, yes, we've already started to raise rents in anticipation.
Other questions for Mr. Fisher? All right. Thank you for coming down. Thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Wanda Caffrey, and I'm here testifying on my own behalf as a Lincoln city taxpayer and someone who is very involved in helping my clients, trying to manage their own budgets. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ward and members of the Lincoln City Council. Property taxes, as we're just explained, not only affect owners of property, but also affect renters as it's passed through. And I'm here to testify in support of the resolution to maintain the $92.3 million tax asking as was passed in the August 2022 biannual Lincoln City budget. Three years ago, I started studying the city budget. I found that while elected officials are telling us that they're not raising our levy or they're holding the levy or lowering the levy, as I've discussed with a couple of you, what I've really found is the general fund levy has raised. In fact, I do have, do have some material here I'd be happy to display where you can see what it is that I'm talking about. And, you know, just last week, I had a client sell her house and decide to move out of state. And in her words, she said to me, I just don't feel I can afford to live here anymore. And that's a sad statement. So as you'll see, the general fund levy has been increasing. And I did not research prior to 2018, an all-honest date. But ever since the 2018-2019 fiscal year, we've had not only an increase in the general fund levy, but also market valuation increases have resulted in the city budget being able to take the windfall, as I commonly refer to it. Any levy reduction that elected officials have been telling us, they've been giving us, has been coming from a reduced levy in the libraries, a elimination of the social security levy, a reduction in the fire and police pension levy, and of course, the reduction in the bond levy, which of course, when there is an increase in market valuation, it doesn't take as much levy to satisfy the bonds. So that would be definitely expected, that we would have a reduction in that levy. In addition, my research over the last couple of years has found not only an increase in the general fund levy, but also I've found that the city has been underbudgeting their tax revenue and overbudgeting their city personnel costs. This has resulted in a $41.6 million slush fund that was created in 2018 in the 2019 tax year. I do have an additional handout here.
Ms. Caffrey, excuse me?
Yes.
I cannot read a single number on that page.
I do have the handout if you'd like it.
Go ahead, Tony Hill.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Here you go. And actually, I have additional copies, if that's helpful. Why don't we do that?
Thank you.
In addition, in the tax year 2019-2020, it created a slush fund of $47.9 million and $48.3 million in the tax year 2020 through 2021. Again, I'm here asking you to please be conscious of what a levy increase or a market valuation increase does to all taxpayers in the city of Lincoln. I'm asking that, I'm here to testify in support of the resolution for the tax asking to remain at the $92 million tax asking that was proposed in the August 2020 council-adopted budget. And I'm asking that the council please not take any windfall that would come from any market valuation increase. So thank you for your consideration and your time today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Caffrey. Questions? Comments? All right. Really appreciate your being here. Thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5C.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Bud Seinhurst, President and CEO of the Lincoln Independent Business Association, 3601 Calvert Street, Suite 3, or, excuse me, Suite 29. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. I am here in support of the resolution before you on the property tax asking that was outlined in the biennial budget. Over the past three years, our businesses and our community and our citizens... budget. Over the past three years, our businesses and our community and our citizens have experienced quite a bit when it comes to inflationary costs across the board, gas prices, groceries, everything else we see with them. And we're asking you to kind of hold the line on this and use that money that was budgeted. As previously pointed out, the general fund levy continues to go up each year. And I would also just point out that if you take a look at the budget documents online, the city has collected in the last three fiscal years, without last year's numbers, so from 18 to 21, almost $102 million more than budgeted. And I think obviously there are some opportunities when sales taxes go up and those types of things. But it's an average of about $33, $34 million a year that's being collected in excess of what we're budgeting. And I think this would be a responsible time for the city to take a step back and leave the budget at that amount that it's been set. I know our small business community, and there are thousands of employees across the community, are feeling strains all over the place. You heard Mr. Fisher talk about raising rents and those types of things when we talk about affordable housing. Those issues continue to come up. This would be a good time for a little break to our taxpayers and show them that we're trying to manage as much as we can. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Seinhorst? Comments? All right. Thank you, Nun. Thanks for being here. Anyone else present? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Katie Bullmeyer. I am the business policy advocate for the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. The chamber prioritizes good business policy that promotes economic vitality and continued growth for our city, and we want to thank Councilman McGinnis for bringing this resolution forward. One key aspect of that mindset is affordable housing, and a large component of affordable housing is property taxes. The chamber is an advocate of working collaboratively and effectively with local elected officials to grow our economy and relieve taxes on businesses and individuals. We want to be sure the city is committed to efficiency within the set budget and work with community members to remain within means of reason. The chamber has been a longtime proponent of limiting property taxes increases to inflation plus growth and reducing the mill levy to offset the excess revenue windfall created by significant increases in property valuations. This point has been heavily supported by our board-adopted local agenda for the last 10 years. Last February, many residents of Lincoln saw large increases in their valuations. The assessor's office range increases anywhere from 10% to 30%. This property tax increase is coming at a time of record-high inflation, and many businesses are struggling with labor shortages. We want to commit to an efficient budget, but also understand the incredible burden already placed on the community members. With that, the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce encourages a yes vote on this resolution.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bullmeyer, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Really glad. Thanks for being here. Anyone else present to testify on this item?
Thank you, council. Dan Klein, 3745 Calvert Street. I also would like to voice a yes for this resolution from Councilman McGinnis. Newspapers and the narrative in the media is often about the affordability of Lincoln for our recent graduates or for existing homeowners to transition from rental to homeownership. And being that the caretakers of what's approved for our budget, I would encourage support for this resolution so that we don't continue to escalate our budgets and use whatever excess is collected beyond your budget to be able to stay within the means. As a homeowner or as a business owner, we set up budgets. We operate within those budgets. Otherwise, we get ourselves in trouble in maybe consumer debt increases, which we've also heard in the media. So I would encourage your yes vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions? Comments, Mr. Klein? Thank you for being here. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5C. Yes, Councilman McGinnis?
Yes, I have a couple of questions if Director Eaton would like to come up. You don't have to bring Ms. Wolf. He probably will eventually. What this resolution is asking for is, just to reaffirm what we were going to have as a tax asking for the amount of taxes that we were going to ask for the general fund from property owner, or from property taxes.
Yeah, it's my understanding, after a conversation with City Attorney Christie, that this is a non-binding intent resolution, if you will, of the current council. And yeah, it basically states the intent of this council that the second-year property tax amount will be, property tax asking will be set at that $92.4 million.
Okay. And when we budget, and actually budget for our budget, what do we budget for to be used in the budget out of the property tax? It's less than 90?
It's 90% of the. So it's by cherry, by city charter?
By city charter.
The budget is set at 90%.
So we're asking for an extra 10% more than what we budget?
Yeah, there's, I believe it's, the intent is that there's a possibility that not all of the taxes assessed in that year will be collected in that year, so we budget at the 90%.
Okay. And then when we, if we do collect the extra 10%, or it comes up, it's really about 9, because 1% goes to, I believe, the county treasurer for collection purposes. But what do we do with the money that's collected above and beyond what we budget?
Those funds are available to be budgeted in the subsequent years.
Okay. And they're just left in the general fund?
They're part of the balance after they've been collected.
Or whatever we decide.
Yep, whatever the council decides.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Before you, any other questions for Director?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Yes. Thank you, Director Eaton. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. So when the budget is, the budget process we have right now is by ordinance. We have it all lined out. Can you tell me, do we often, does council often do resolutions at the midpoint of the biennial budget? And what's?
Well, not to my knowledge. I don't, I think this may be, again, as I mentioned, this, you know, this council certainly has this opportunity to adopt this resolution today, and then a new council will be seated here in a few weeks, and they'd be able to do a similar kind of resolution at that time. Of course, we look forward to working with the council this summer on adopting and considering the budget. As you know, we've already adopted the 23-24 budget, so the mid-biennium is really for some cleanup items, if there are any sort of unanticipated circumstances, such as the additional funding that we learned recently that I mentioned to the council here. Recently, we gave you the mid-year update. The police and fire pension, there's an additional actuarially determined employer contribution that will be needed. So we'll come back and we'll be working with you this summer on that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Eaton? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you. Is there a regularly scheduled process? My understanding is that typically there is summer work, that you do look at this in August, there's a public hearing. So there's a process already in place that is in our city charter and our Lincoln Municipal Code. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We did share, I think when we did our mid-year update for you here recently, we did share a tentative schedule that we'll be working, but of course, we intend to work with you throughout the summer as well. But that typically starts in early August, where we'll visit with you. We'll have, introduce a CIP transfer ordinance. We'll also introduce a budget revision resolution at that time. Of course, there will be a public hearing where the council will have an opportunity to seek public input on the city budget as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Eaton or comments? All right. I have one, maybe it might be for Mr. Christie. So just a few minutes ago, did you not say that it was clarified through our city attorney that this resolution is different, because it is not in our budget process? This is a non-binding, this is, the intent of this resolution, which other bodies of government do all the time, is a non-binding intent for discussion, now I'm adding to that, but for discussion purposes, correct? Was that your legal opinion?
Correct, yes. It's a, and I think we phrase it as a statement of intent, and that's exactly what it is.
So it's not, it may be a bit out of the ordinary, but in fact, it is, it can be appropriate for the purpose of a non-binding intent for the reasons that have been stated by people present today, correct? I mean, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, yes. And I think I heard everything that you said.
Right.
For discussion and a statement of intent from this council.
Yeah, non-binding.
Correct.
But for discussion purposes.
Yep.
For future. We're not legislating future councils.
That's right.
All right. I just want that on the record, to be clear. We're not legislating future city councils to do something with this. This is for discussion purposes.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that? Okay.
Yes, and I'd like to, I like to call it a statement of intent, but we're saying the same thing. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, I'd like to couch it in different terms, based on some experience in the legislature, where we have resolutions for basketball teams, right? Or what, I mean, this is much more different, serious and different. But resolutions, particularly this one, is non-binding, but appropriate for this council to talk about, or any council for that matter, whether it's in budget season or not. We are not legislating a future council to do anything should this pass.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to put that on the record, so everybody, that we're all clear on that. Okay. Director Eaton, are we giving you pause?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Just listening, in case you have any additional questions for me.
He's just ready to answer questions.
Yeah, all right, very good. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Thanks very much. All right. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify or comment on this item? We are on item 5C. Any council people? Okay, very good. Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Madam Chair, you know, I was not present for the budget, so I'm sorry I missed it. I know, it's always a big process, and I guess I'm a process person. I really do believe that there's a process in place for a reason. And this just, from my outside perspective, seems a bit premature. My valuation went up 20%, and so I am concerned about inflation and about costs. But I do believe that the elected officials, the people that are elected are attuned to the needs of our residents. Tomorrow, we have an election, and I trust fully that the democratic process will win out. And I don't personally feel that we should be imposing any kind of statement of intent to the next city council. And that's just how I feel about it. Again, there's a process in place. I feel like we should have a robust public hearing in August, when that would be the normal process. And I just wanted to make those statements. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Right, okay.
You know, I will say one.
Councilwoman Washington, you were recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope that, I mean, one, we did pass the biennial budget, and I was awfully glad to get back to biennial budgets instead of the annual process that we allowed during COVID. So I'm glad that we had the two-year, we have a two-year budget. I'm really glad to have a conversation about how we want our budget process to work in the future. But I also, like Councilwoman Suarez, trust the populace of Lincoln. Tomorrow, when they vote for the new council to be seated, that they will vote in people who also are interested and committed to making wise budget decisions for our city. And I don't want to, I don't want to presuppose what the next council will or won't do. We're going to have new members, quite a few new members, on Wednesday morning, or Tuesday morning, Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. And I'd like to make certain that they get to participate in this robust conversation. I hope each of you come back and help us work out the mid-consideration this July and August.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I guess I would just say, to your point, Councilwoman Washington, we just heard from legal counsel that this does not bind any future city council to anything, just to be clear. So that doesn't bind any new members to, should it pass, to do anything. So I just want you to understand that. Okay.
I do.
Okay. Councilman McGinnis?
I will say something. For me, in bringing this forward at this point, was that there's many in the community out there that are starting to budget, and starting to figure out how to pay taxes, or how to collect rents, or how to do other things. So the idea behind this was to give a little bit of notice to members in the community that we will be looking at just not, I say, taking advantage of the windfall. That's something that we would intend not to do, which we can make change, or the city council members coming forward in the future can do that, if they want to. That will be something I won't be part of, and I don't believe Tammy will be part of. But I just thought it was very important, because we're doing the same thing in our business. We manage a lot of office buildings. We manage a lot, and we have common area maintenance and taxes. And if our taxes are really going to go up, we're going to start collecting that money now to pay those taxes when they come due. So it is a timing issue, a little bit. I mean, waiting until the mill levy is set, last year, we did it when? The end of September, or the first of October? So that's many months away. And then what we're going to have to do, not have to do, but with a lot of our tenants, is go ahead and say, okay, now we need a lot of money, instead of going out and asking for little. It's kind of like our water department. Our water department has been raising 5% every year. We don't need it, but they just didn't want to go in and have to raise 20%, you know, every three years or four years. So it's over time. And I know a lot of landlords would much rather do a little bit of increase to their tenants, or in our case, to our tenants that are in our building. So for me, it was a lot of just intent. And I know it's not binding, I know, but I think it would help a lot of the people that are starting to budget to know, and I know landlords in certain apartment complexes have gone up 30%, 40%, which are pretty significant numbers. And they would, I'm sure they would like to know, is it something that they're going to have to budget for into the future? And so, that was the intent of this, mostly. Also, it's just hopefully that we can continue to say that, you know, homeownership is really important, and it's important to me, and I think it's important to a lot of people in this community. And the idea of more cost on top of homeownership, but those are things, I guess, the next council is going to have to decide at budget time. And that won't be us, because that's a lot of it. And the other part of this is, this is only 16% basically of their property taxes. As I know, the county board has already indicated that they will probably be lowering their mill levy back down, because, and they would be another 16% of the property taxes. So that only adds up to 32, and we all know who the big dog is in the property tax. And so, that's what's going to affect most of this. But I thought it would be a good thing to just come forward and say to the people, the landowners or the landlords, that we don't intend, at this point, this group wouldn't, at this point, be looking at taking a full advantage of a large assessment increase. And that's kind of why I brought this forward at this time. And I agree, it's kind of unorthodox a little bit, but it would be a chance just to kind of start down the road of telling people, yes, we will live within our budget. We're already increasing, this number of $92 million is basically a 6% increase in what we're taking this year. So we're already increasing for certain items in our, in budget that we've already passed. So I'm not asking for reduction in anything. I'm just saying, let's just stay where we are, keep the course. With that being said, I would like to make a motion that we delay this for one week.
Public hearing only, or vote only?
Vote.
Just vote. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Becky. Yes, any further discussion?
I want to thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I just went right to my neighbor. I want to thank you for having a conversation about this, because I think that all of those things that, you know, that you mentioned in broad concepts, I mean, homeownership is important. It's really a critical piece. Affordable housing is important. I am glad that we were having a conversation.
Anyone else? Councilman Beckyus?
I concur. Housing affordability is important in our community, and I know that the future council will continue to always look for ways to make sure that we are providing the services that citizens expect at the lowest cost to them.
Anyone else? I guess I would just like to say, this has been the COVID council. And, you know. And, um, you know, and, um, for the majority of us, so when we have the Independent Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce in front of us saying, pay attention to this, I'm going to pay attention, and that, that steered me through COVID, um, a lot of us. That was a good guidepost for me, and that has not changed. And, um, some of the ordinances I passed for COVID will expire when the, uh, public health emergency expires. So even though it may be a bit unorthodox, you know what? Here's what I have to say to that. It's, it's always good to have the discussion, and sometimes thinking outside the box is the best thing that you can do. I too am a process person, but you know, um, some of the best ideas in government have happened when you think outside the box and, um, have those tough, unusual discussions. So with that, if there are no further comments, um, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote on the motion to delay? Vote only with no further public hearing.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. We can move on.
We can vote on items 5A and 5B. I'll call item 5A, approve the naming of the ticket office at Pinewood Bowl as the Tom Lorenz Box Office, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Councilman McGinnis.
Uh, yeah. You thought you were done with me, didn't you?
Never.
Now, uh, working with Tom Lorenz was one of the great joys I had, so I just want to say thank you to his family and, and others, and very fitting, I mean, whatever we could do, and he made you all feel like your friends, not just, you know, not just a colleague. He made everybody feel pretty good, like, you know, he really cared about you, so this is really fitting.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just add to what's been said, and thank you so much for being present, and to Director Stuckey-Ross, thank you for leading this effort, and we're just so glad you've hung there, hung out through this meeting for this moment, so thank you. And thank you for sharing Tom with all of us in Lincoln, so, all right. Without further ado, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Torres?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. He looks a little something like his father.
Yeah, he does. Exactly.
I know. Yeah, I see a lot of Tom.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you again.
A smile, a nose.
Item 5B, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 1st through April 15th, 2023, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes our Section 5 public hearing resolutions. We'll move on to Section 6, our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item 6A, Street and Alley Vacation 22008, application of Neighbor Works Lincoln to vacate portions of U Street right-of-way between 25th and 26th Streets on property generally located at North 26th and U Streets.
Uh, good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I'm going to put up, um, kind of a, just to get everybody oriented about what we're doing here, um, I think this is the clearest picture, so let's start with that. These are the various lots that we have. This is U Street. This is a large right-of-way that is next to U Street. So, I was up in Michelle's office earlier, normally when you're looking at right-of-way, the sidewalk into the street is what is considered to be the city property. Generally, it's a little on the other side of this. But if you go back and look, we're talking about a large area of right-of-way that goes up into these yards, and that's all just fine, because the homes were built and everything's there and fine. So here's a map, again, that shows this U Street area, and the right-of-way is in this area here. We're also dealing with right-of-way that is outside the project area, but we're trying to be consistent for the whole block. Wayne Mortenson's here to talk about, a little bit about his project, but I had my packet of picture. I think he'll be able to explain a little bit about what they're trying to do. Bottom line, this can't be done within the right-of-way that we have there, so, um, that's really why this is before you. Um, it's create within the zoning regulations that we have the amount of the setbacks necessary to be able to build these particular homes in that area. Um, and I ran this by Wayne earlier, and I think I've got my story straight. David, um, David Carey's in the other room. If you have any zoning questions, which I think he'd be able to answer those a little bit better than I am, but basically what we're trying to do is create an opportunity for a couple of additional affordable units to go in this neighborhood. Neighbor Works has, um, figured out a process by which we can do that, and I think that what you've seen is, there's an inordinate amount of right-of-way down U Street that is pinching this, these particular lots and making it difficult to be able to do that. So I'll stop there and answer if you have any questions.
Any questions for Director Marvin? All right. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hey, Council, I will be very quick. I don't think this is very controversial. Appreciate the time. As you are all aware, um, land is scarce, uh, and we try to build affordable housing wherever we can. We saw this as a great opportunity to work with the local residents, in this case, Tim Rena and Kay Walter, um, who are donating, um, their property adjacent to this site, um, to Neighbor Works, where we will pay to tear the property down and replace one building with three, um, structures, two of which will be affordable housing, and create a new gateway for a urban amenity that they call the Holly Hamlet. Uh, it's a wonderful place, uh, and we're really excited about this project to, uh, leverage and fully, um, complement the work that they've been doing there for years.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mortenson, any questions? Councilwoman Washington.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Ward. Um, could you, uh, Mr. Mortenson, thank you for coming down, and could you explain, uh, where would the units go? I mean, I'm familiar with the 26th and U Street, 25th and U Street. Is that also going to be purchased by Neighbor Works?
So the, um, city, um, insisted, and we think it, it makes sense, that if, um, one right-of-way is vacated, that both of them be vacated for consistency purposes. So the two units, um, that, uh, Director Marvin just shared will front onto 26th Street, and then there'll be a third unit, uh, off of the alley that fronts onto U Street. So we've got, um, an infill, uh, home right where the current one is, a new home on the corner, and then a third, uh, that takes advantage of that alleyway. Yep, there we go. Thanks. Thanks, Director Marvin. Um, so, um, yeah, that's, north is up, uh, U Street is across the top, 26th is on the, on the. You bet.
That's so helpful.
Evidently, we need larger monitors.
Something to do with age?
No, of course not. Um, then I think my, my next question is really for Director Marvin. Are we offering the vacated right-of-way to the adjacent landowner at the other end?
The whole length of U Street, that block, has, um, we sold the, the right-of-way is what we've done.
Okay.
And it, it encompasses, we weren't going to just do.
Right.
Um, a half a block. So that's what we've done, is we've sold the right-of-way, and I think, um, the price that Michelle put on it includes easements that are underneath the property, so it compensates for that to, um, retain our easements that we'd have for water and sewer pipes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Schob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Marvin, Mr. Mortenson, thank you both for coming forward. So doing this gives us narrower setbacks, which allows for placing more affordable housing in this neighborhood, is that correct?
But it doesn't, it doesn't affect U Street, and I'm not actually sure if it even affects the sidewalk. It just provides for, um, expansion into that.
House will be built on a legal footprint rather than crouching on the city right-of-way.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman McGinnis.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the, the drawing of the, you said three homes?
Yeah, you want me to?
What you're putting on, and that's over on, they'll have access off of, their front doors will be on 26th?
Two. So this, here's U Street.
Pull, pull that down a little bit, it's a little too, uh, okay.
There's U Street.
Here's U, just 26th and, and so we'd have a door here, a door here, and a door here.
Okay. So they're going to draw access off of 26th Street for the driveways? Is that what it looks like?
And the alley?
And the alley. But currently along 26th Street, there's no driveways on that side.
So, let me zoom out. I think these must be the two that would be on 26th Street then.
So they would be the only two that would have access on that block off of 26th Street. All the other homes look like they're built right up to the front of the lot line. Look at the GIS.
This, the, looks like the other home has access off of the alley.
Off the alley.
Yeah.
Okay. And the reason you're not doing that is so the other home could be built on the back part?
And then there's, the, the reason we're not able to use the alley is because the
Holly Hamlet has become a, a central amenity on the middle of the block, uh, and so, um, Tim and Kay have, uh, created their own version of a land trust that aggregates those backyards into, uh, that common area of the Holly Hamlet. Uh, and then this obviously has been through historic review and through the CUP approval
And it, it looks like that the project continues kind of that common amenity outlot area as well.
Yes, yeah, and it, we, we believe it provides, uh, northern terminus for the Hamlet and the potential for a gateway, um, to that amenity.
Out of control.
Any other questions for Director Marvin or Mr. Mortenson? All right. Thank you both very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 6A. Item 6A? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. We can move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling item 6B, Change of Zone 23012, application of Waterford Estates for a change of zone from AG Agriculture District to B2 Planet Neighborhood Business District as part of Waterford Estates Commercial Park on property generally located at North 98th Street and O Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, appearing today on behalf of Waterford Estates LLC, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105. So I'm here today with the change of zone to B2 on kind of the last piece on the west side of 98th Streets, where I'm kind of on the northwest corner of 98th and O. Uh, we were back in a few years ago and actually got a use permit for the entire area, uh, but did not get the zoning on it, wanting to wait until we actually had users, because obviously as soon as we get the zone changed, then the taxes go up, and, and so waiting till we had actual users. Um, the little building you see right there is the parcel that was sold to the City of Lincoln for the fire station that's out there. Uh, so you'll see that the change of zone request has a little bit of the fire station lot, too, and I think that's just to, there's already a portion that was zoned B2. Um, if you recall, you can kind of see over here way back in 2008, when we did the original zoning out here, we put a strip of B2 down 98th on both sides and over to kind of give neighbors notice in any way we could that there would be commercial zoning coming here. And so this really is just a completion of, um, the zoning on the west side. Um, it was on consent agenda at Planning Commission, um, so it was approved in that manner. It's in conformance with the comp plan. Uh, the only thing I have to ask you today is, um, because we are getting close to closing on this property with a user, I am going to ask if the council would defer their vote on this, instead of doing it next week, if you would defer your vote until the 22nd of May, that will allow us to work a closing into escrow with our buyer and kind of have things set up, and then have the vote to approve the zoning on the 22nd. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Kalkowski. Questions? Comments? None? All right. Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 6B. All right. Seeing none, could we gather, um, Councilman McGinnis once more? All right. Thank you. Councilman Beckius. And we'll proceed to items 6C when you are ready, and we see, Madam Clerk? Okay. Thank you.
I'll be calling items 6C and 6D together. Item 6C is approving the conditional zoning agreement between the city and Q and L LLC for the property generally located at 2201 South 84th Street, and the related change of zone 23018, application of Q and L LLC for a change of zone from P Public District to H4 General Commercial District for the property generally located at 2201 South 84th Street.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item? Item 6C. Anyone present is, um, Director Carey in the, uh, holding area in the Luxford Studio? There he is now.
Yay!
You may enter, but never leave, Director.
Do you have walk-up music?
Yeah. Thank you.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Uh, yeah, what you have before you is the, um, proposed, uh, change of zone and, um, agreement related to the, um, the old, uh, fire station site. This was, uh, an item that was, um, made available for purchase, um, and effectively what we have here is we have a, the applicant and the potential, um, owner to move forward with, uh, the opportunity to own the site and develop it with the agreement to, uh, close off the, uh, left turn capability to the site, uh, as well as to allow for, uh, a turn lane. So that's in a nutshell, uh, what we have here. Um, this was approved by the Planning Commission eight to zero, um, and it was part of the consent agenda on April 5th.
Thank you. Other questions for Director Carey on this item?
I don't.
Councilman McGinnis?
Um, probably not for Director Carey, but you know, we, we haven't voted on a purchase agreement on this one yet, have we?
I think you have. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Thank you, Director Carey.
Thank you.
Very much. We can, is there anyone else present?
Still shows the City of Lincoln as the owner.
Anyone else present to testify? Seeing none, we can move on to item 6D.
I called item 6C and D together.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd read it in yet, but maybe you did. Okay. Anyone here on 6D? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Ms. Kalkowski asked us to delay a vote on something. Uh, Ms. Calkowski asked us to delay a vote on something, do we need to make a motion to put that on pending? Or do we wait till next week when it comes up for a vote and then move it?
I think my, my sense was next week then, when it came up for a vote to delay till May 22nd.
We make a motion to delay then? Okay. Well, as long as we have a plan.
I think that we can check with our city attorney, I should not be making those types of decisions.
I think it is, uh, Madam Chair, I think you were correct, it comes up for vote next week. I think at that time, uh, a motion could be made. I would also say, Councilman Shoeb, you're not incorrect, you, you, there can always be a motion made to put it on pending, but...
That's an extra step, why don't we just wait until next week?
Yep, I think waiting till, uh, the voting section next week makes perfect sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Always good to check. All right. Okay, Madam Clerk?
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda, we shall now move on to Section 7. Ordinance's Third Reading Related Resolutions, item 7A, is approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Stephen L. and Gail E. Carper for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 139 North 18th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, introduced by Suarez.
Shall I move?
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis, further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote, oh, sorry, Councilman McGinnis?
I was just gonna say, this is a, kind of a long ti- long time coming, because this was basically told to this person that they would have this a lot longer, a lot earlier than...
That's right, that's right.
But, this will put a final end to that piece of property.
Very good. Any other comments? Questions? Saying none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7B is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23002, application of Hoppy Development to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map from urban residential to commercial and urban residential on approximately two acres for the property generally located at 1620 South 84th Street, introduced by Suarez.
Shall I move?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion?
This is just to put it in the comp plan, right?
Yes.
To amend the comp plan, yes.
Yes. To amend it, yes. Any other discussion or questions? You're good, all right. Everyone good, okay, please call the vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7C is Annexation 23001, application of Hoppy Development to annex approximately 4.70 acres, more or less, of the property generally located at 1620 South 84th Street, introduced by Suarez.
Shall I move?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius, further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Carried seven zero. Item 7D is Change of Zone 23013, application of Hoppy Development for a change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R1 Residential District, PUD Plan Unit Development, to allow for up to 8,200 square feet of office use and a hotel with up to five rooms with associated receivers on the property generally located at 1620 South 84th Street, introduced by Suarez.
Shall I move?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Councilman Beckius?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair Ward, I would like to introduce motion to amend number two, which places continue our conditions on continued access to 84th Street in addition to acknowledging that the sanitary sewer is not available for the property and to require an additional subdivision agreement prior to issuing further building permits.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, discussion? Further discussion? Councilman Shoeb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Councilman Beckius, uh, we had a long discussion at public hearing last time, and I thought we talked about all these things. How's this different from what we saw last week at the public hearing?
So, the amendment that you have before you, I think, reflects, um, the proposal actually coming from LTU Director Elliott in terms of allowing the user continued access to 84th Street during this time. However, should additional development occur on lots 76 or 77, that then access would close on 84th Street um, as a compromise, if you will, um, to allow this project to move forward today.
That, I, that was my understanding, that's what we were doing from last week. This is basically just codifies that, or does it do more?
Codifies what we had generally spoken of last week. Um, this is different than the, what was originally proposed last week, and then we had a, our public discussion, and then we had Director Elliott come forward and say, hey, maybe we can make this work, and that's what this is signifying here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Councilman Beckius.
Other questions? Councilman McGinnis, followed by Councilwoman Washington?
Okay, so, if there's any other development whatsoever, that would cancel any access at all to 84th Street? For any of the properties? Outlot A, or...
So, what, the wording here references existing outlots, or, excuse me, existing lots 76 and 77, but yes, would turn into Lot 1 and Outlot A going forward. That's correct.
Okay, even if access management would allow it in the future, we would still say you can't use it?
So, I don't envision the access, ass, access management policy allowing that in the future. Um, actually, the access management policy today would state that, um, closure on 84th Street would be the preferred method, as we heard testimony, um, from staff last week. Um, however, what this does is allows the intended use to move forward with that access on 84th Street, with the understanding that in due time, um, that access along 84th Street in order to increase, uh, uh, safety in the community as well as travel, travel time in the communities would close eventually.
Councilwoman Washington?
As a clarifying point on that last conversation that, uh, Councilor McGinnis raised, um, the point of, and this is where you tell me I'm right or I'm wrong, the point of, of removing access on, to 84th is when additional development happens that increases the traffic to parcels 76, 77, or parcel 1 and Outlot A.
Uh, any sort of development, so...
Any sort of development, okay.
Whether it's additional commercial floor area, or if it's additional residential living units, um, any additional use beyond what we, um, are working to approve here today would trigger that closure.
Thank you for that. Uh, and then I had a question, in reading the motion that's on the agenda, and reading the motion to amend, and I think this is just, this is the Law Department clarifying what's happening, not so much on the access, so I apologize for pulling us down a separate rabbit hole. But, the agenda talks about this, uh, being a R1 Residential District, PUD Plan Unit Development that allows some amount of square foot for office use and a hotel with up to five rooms. And, the motion to amend number two, I think, clarifies that hotel by calling it a short-term rental. And, I had brought that question up in Directors separately. And, um, Mr. Hoppy, is it your intention to operate a short-term rental, or a...
You can come forward, Mr. Hoppy, if you would, please.
And then, we've got a question, so I'm gonna let you answer it at the mic. Is it your intention to operate a short-term rental?
I don't know.
Okay, your, your intention is to operate a hotel?
Our intention is to build an office building behind this building, and to use the existing house for conference space and, uh, meeting space in conjunction with the, uh, with the office building. To do that, the, um, conference space and conference activity are allowed in a hotel.
Thank you.
Okay. In that situation, there's, the code, building code, is different for the hotel, for a hotel
than it is for an office.
With this designated as a hotel, we can leave the building as it is without structurally changing the flooring and floor loading in the building. So, we have no intention of publicly offering the rooms in that building for lease. However, the reality of this use and how it's designated allows it to, us to use it in conjunction with the office, without doing a substantial amount of structural changes to the building.
Thank you.
Is that clear? And as to, I don't know why that changed. We found out about the, this, uh, proposed amendment last Friday, and apparently, I don't know what amendment's in front of you. The amendment we saw, um, Friday, last Friday, included my personal homesite in the prohibitions of development.
And that's been removed?
Pardon?
That's removed.
Okay, I, I haven't seen what you got, so I don't know. But, our preference would be to remove these properties, Lot 1 and Outlot A, into the, whatever future asset management plan is, uh, at the time of redevelopment of their Outlot A or Lot 1. And I would, uh, and that's what we, we understood, was what we were talking about last Monday, and where we left the conversation. So, um, if that needs to be codified, rather than the amendment in front of you which requires relinquishment, and there's a distinction, relinquishment of access is in this, uh, amendment, it's my understanding, as opposed to returning it to the asset management, or, not asset management, the access management plan at the time of redevelopment, which would give, uh, the LTU the option to decide whatever they want with it, or whether it, how it should be applied, if it follows the plan at that time, or whatever. And I would, if I may, offer, what I've drafted is an alternate. I would, one of those for the council as well.
I've seen it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you.
And, and this amendment basically reflects where I thought we were, um, last Monday.
Thank you.
Did you author this? Is this yours?
I drafted this, but it would need to be offered by somebody, but, uh...
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Washington, did you have more questions for Mr. Hoppy?
I don't have any more questions, but thank you for coming forward.
So, I guess the, what we would ask is...
Okay, hold on, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm asking if she's...
Yeah, I don't have any more questions of Mr. Hoppy, I appreciate you giving me this motion. Thank you, for passing it to all of us.
All right. Any other, Councilman McGinnis?
So, I believe this one would be the one that would leave it, that any other development, he would have to confide with the access management. The one that's in front of us says you relinquish it totally. So those are the only two differences, I believe, between these two?
Councilman?
Okay, there was the other one that I was talking about, bringing forward, that would do, that would do everything except, instead of relinquishing it forever, it would put it back to access management at time of change.
And you believe, Councilman McGinnis, this, that is in Mr. Hoppy's amendment? And not in Councilman McGinni- or Councilman Beckius's, is that correct?
I believe those are the, we talked, those are the only two.
That's the only difference?
I have not read, I have not read Mr. Hoppy's proposal. So, I don't know.
I would like to ask Mr. Hoppy one question.
Okay, sure.
What's the difference between relinquishing or having to probably relinquish it at a time you come forward with any development?
May very well be. But, uh, Councilman McGinnis, when we designed out this house, as we presented to you in the past, the design and the use of that property presents itself to the west. Okay? So, for the however many years that we are using that property without a change to Lot, Outlot A, or other change, increase to Lot 1, will be, people will be driving in and everything will be designed, so you're seeing an approach from the west, entrance from the west, blah, blah, blah. Okay. What my proposal does, it says, and what I, where I thought we were last Monday, was, if there's a change to any of that, we'll revisit the policy, and goes back in the policy. That would allow the, the, uh, the difference would be, allow us to go to LTU, and if there's been a change to 98th Street and it's opened up, and an east bypass or south street opens up and there's a light, uh, or they put in the additional changes to the school zone that's contemplated at Messiah Lutheran, um, then, and it shows that our use of the property is no big deal and doesn't affect the travel on 84th Street, LTU could say, okay, it's for the last 15 years, there's not been a problem? Why not leave it that way? It gives LTU the, the handle. This way, in Mr. Beckius's, uh, proposal, takes it away now. And it just doesn't seem to make sense to me when the, you know, we can return it to LTU, and whatever that policy may be in the future, we don't know. Does that make sense? It does to me.
Councilman McGinnis?
I can't remember my, uh, but, if we do come forward, you're gonna have to come forward with a zone change. It's an outlot, you would have to come forward with a PUD or redo it all. And at that point, you could ask LTU for a waiver of what we would say is a, no access to 84th Street. So, you could ask for access to 84th Street at that time, just kinda like we are now.
Right.
Okay. But, the other part I had a little bit of concern was, what if you took your Outlot A and wanted to build a house on it? And you decided to do that, somebody came along and offered you way too much money to build one big home on there, you would not have access to 84th Street for any driveway or any home. They would, that person would have to, not really have access to any public right away, except now Stony Hill Road, they would be able to come in off of Stony Hill Road, 'cause Outlot A butts Stony Hill Road.
Okay.
So that could be where residential people, owners, could have access.
Well, I guess I'm confused about what the question there might be.
Well, my, my, my picture was, at one point I was worried, what if somebody wanted to come along and make this residential? They would no longer have access to a public right away. But, looking at this, they would have access to Stony Hill.
Outlot A has access to Stony Hill.
Right.
As part of the, uh, all of the things you're doing, one of the things that was requested of us, and we agreed, was relinquishment of access from Outlot A to 84th Street. So, that is different than what is in the amendment. And I think it's still, the relinquishment of access for Outlot A is still in the scope, it's not changed. So, when you, if you passed it without either of the amendments, there's no access for Outlot A to 84th Street.
Okay, okay.
Is that, is your clarifying everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the only difference I'm seeing is, here, under my proposed amendment, it throws, uh, it just throws it back to the LTU in access policy.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Hoppy, while he's up here? Or comments on amendments, the differences? I have, yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
I, I guess, um, Mr. Hoppy, you're here to talk about an appeal of a request for deviation from the access management policy
Right.
currently. And, and my sense is that, I think, Richard, you kind of, Mr. McGinnis, you kind of mentioned that you could come back again if there was a change in the situation. If, if you did do some development, you could come back again and request another deviation. So, to me, there's always an option for you to come back, and we can make changes and compromises. So, I don't see the, I guess, the problem, I think everybody's thinking about, let's cross our Ts and dot our Is. I think everybody's thinking about let's cross our Ts and dot our Is so that we're all understanding how we move forward. But I think your opportunity to come and request a deviation from the access management policy is always there now and in the future. That's my, my point of view.
Except I guess the way I read the amendment would take that opportunity away from us. Mr. Beckus's amendment, it says we relinquish, when we change use in the way of future, we have already relinquished access to 84th Street by that amendment. Isn't that your intent?
My, yes, that's my intent. Now, the city can, can back off of that if they want to. I find that probably to be unlikely.
How's that?
City can grant access to a parcel.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, it seems to me the appropriate thing is to throw it to access management anyway.
Well, it's...
Go ahead. Yeah, we're going to have Director Elliott answer some questions, but do you have Councilman Beckus exchanged or something you want to point out? Okay. Director Elliott, could you please come forward? Councilman Shob has some questions for you. When were you done, Councilwoman Suarez? Thank you, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Councilman Shob?
Director Elliott, thanks for coming forward. Last week, we had a public hearing. You came forward, you helped us understand a little bit of this. There was discussions and compromise and negotiations and things like that. And I'm not sure where we are now.
So ultimately, our concern is increasing traffic. And as we talked about a week ago, with the increasing traffic on 84th, which is only going to grow, it's not gonna, traffic's not gonna go away.
Regardless of Mr. Hoppe's development, it's going to keep going.
Correct, it is. Now, Mr. Hoppe's current plan and what he has said his intentions is for this does increase the traffic, but it, it's a relatively minimal comparatively speaking. However, any development, whether it's Lot 76, 77, or 45, I think is how it's indicated on there, that's going to increase traffic. And so if and when those lots are developed out, that's when we would go back to the access management policy and not take access off 84th, but instead take access off the, the new access points that are created when they're developing those other areas. They'd be in there doing construction, so they're already doing this. It's not like they have to go in at a special time and do that. It would just be when, if and when they develop out that, those additional parcels. And that would be commercial or residential, because both increase traffic into that area.
I'm gonna, I'm, this is not my area of expertise. Thank you for being here, I appreciate that. And my development friends, thank you for my understanding. So we come, one of the outlots, somebody decides to develop it. They would come back to you and the council and ask for access to 84th Street? And we'd say, no, not going to happen, you need to go the other direction?
Well, I think...
Is that the way it currently stands?
An outlot versus the other lots, I think there's two different things. But if they were going to develop those other areas, just like any other plan, it all comes to make sure it's in conformance. And as always, as we do in many of our such processes, there's always opportunities for people to ask for deviations. And those are stuff that we always take under consideration and review. You know, as Councilman Beckus indicated, our preference now, and we are making a compromise here, is to not have that access off 84th for safety purposes. So it's, we would look at it and see what we could do, but it's not one that we would, unless they drastically changed, that we would probably be hesitant to grant.
I understand, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Anyone else have questions for Director Elliott? Anyone else? I, yes. Councilwoman Washington?
Director Elliott, last, last week during public hearing, I heard what you had to say about where we stand in our access management policy and why we ask, why we're trying to limit the number of access points, why we're not increasing the access points and the safety concerns. I also heard a conversation amongst multiple people sitting up here and folks, you know, testifying for what the future might be in this area. Yes. And that the future would bring in an additional access point of, as it was created, the extension of Stony Hill Road.
Correct.
All of that made sense to me and continues to make sense to me. That should we increase the amount of activity in these areas, whether we're going to call them outlots, lots, parcels, whatever, that that increased traffic into this area would come in off of Stony Hill. And, and that makes sense to me today as much as it did yesterday or last week. Mr. Hoppe also had interjected or added to the conversation toward the very end that the whole world could change, because things are always changing. And that's when he mentioned 98th and the East Beltway and things like that. As we look out into that future area, future world, I think we all know that it would be great to have the East Beltway, but we know how long it took to get the South Beltway. We're talking a long, long time. And so there's a much greater likelihood that the area's going to develop before we get an East Beltway and all our stats change around traffic. The proposal that we have here before is called Amendment 2, and then Amendment, and then Mr. Hoppe's proposal, which he just distributed to us, put the decision about the policy at different times. As Councilwoman Suarez noted, this is, we are dealing with an appeal today. And so this is part of that appeal process, the motion to amend number 2, that says if you increase traffic in the area, you may now, you will now stop off of 84th and come in off of Stony Hill. And though I haven't read Mr. Hoppe's motion, he says that it is, once we start to develop the area more, we'll come back and make a request to L T U for access. At which point, he may be told exactly what we're doing today, which is you must come in off of Stony Hill. Same outcome. Different timeframe.
Potentially the same outcome. However, should, as Mr. Hoppe indicated, lots of things change very quickly.
Yeah.
If, let's say, Mr. Hoppe decides to sell his property. Not saying that, he's indicated that, but the hypothetical and the, the comment that things change. Having this now clearly sets the expectation and understanding. So no future buyer would be caught off guard by this. It's something that would be clear on the record and provide clarity for any future purchases. It also, I think, based the changes, East Beltway, all of those don't have the traffic model, so I can't say this with certainty, but I think I can say with confidence, adding an East Beltway is not going to change the traffic on 84th Street. There's residential, it continues to grow residential. It's for people simply just trying to get north and south here in Lincoln. We saw that with Nebraska Parkway. Yes, we don't have semis there, but the traffic is still there. It's not going to magically disappear as soon as the East Beltway or 98th Street develop out. I would also, with those two, it could be decades before those are built out. And the volume on 84th is going to continue to grow between now and then, which is the increased risk for crashes in that area. So doing it now, I think, provides clear expectations for everybody and the future plans for this area. It also, putting it off is just kicking the can down the road. And we're going to just saddle another council with the same issue rather than just resolving it here today. And so I think dealing with it now sets the standards. Again, it's something that we tried to find a compromise. One thing that we're always told is L T U's too rigid. And trying to find a compromise to make this work, I think, is a reasonable win-win solution for everybody involved. So that's why we think this is something that we could live with. My team, obviously, it's not their ideal. They would like to say this, we follow the access management blindly. And so I think this is a good compromise.
Councilman McGinnis?
One quick thought, you said it could be decades to get 98th Street done? You scared me.
No, no. Some of it will be done, but the entire length of 98th to really relieve 84th Street could be decades. Segments will be done, but I'm not sure an entire north-south. Maybe I'm just cynical, I don't know, but...
No, I really, I, you know, I live in there, I've grown up in there, or last 30-some years. 84th Street is busy and will stay busy. You're right. But 98th Street will help a lot. My only concern is if it's part of the access management going forward that they could have an access there, we're just telling them no now. Even if things change in, you know, years in the future, they can have access. And so they would have to come back and ask for a deviation again, which I know you don't like to give. And L T U is pretty hard to get deviations out of at any point. But at this point, I, I know what's going to happen in this area. And I know, I, I can predict that we will have a lot of housing to the east of here. You've just got to get a couple landowners excited about doing it. And we'll have a, a nice way around the back of this. I still see connecting to Norville and coming around back and connecting to South Street, where there will probably be a light at some point.
Other questions or comments for Director Elliott?
I have, I have a question, Director. If you can help me understand a bit why it would be, I don't know if fair is the right word, but the access management policy decides this now, but in the future, it goes directly back to the city, the decision for the access, or to L T U? Or maybe that's a question for Councilman Beckus. What, what makes that fair? Instead of going back to the policymaker, deciders, whoever is on that management policy, access management policy committee, or whoever does that? Why doesn't it go back to them instead of all of, for, for, for me, it's like, okay, now, now we're going to decide, meaning you, the city, L T U. It doesn't, I mean, in general, that just doesn't make sense or seem fair as I look at it. And it's not a fair comparison, but I think about, and I mentioned it to Councilman Beckus when we dealt with, and I don't know the name of this, I can't remember the name of this committee, but when we were looking at signage in my district, Hub Hall Heights, and people were going to be forced to change their house numbers. But do you remember that issue? But they called me and then the council got to decide that, you know what? We didn't have to do that after all. I'm not trying to say that, I'm just saying it doesn't, why now?
I can, I can share if...
Okay, sure. Both of you can share, that would be great.
Sure. The reason that I introduced this, this amendment was to find a, a compromise to get Mr. Hoppe's desire to build out his office done today. As we know, as was stated last week, the access, access management policy today is asking for a closure on 84th Street. Additionally, there was discussion about a decel lane, which the developer said he did not want and was too costly. And so on the third iteration, L T U came forward and said, golly, here's an entrance that if you would just tweak a little bit, we can live with. And so I just want to remind my council members that access management today would advocate for a closure of this drive aisle onto 84th Street. And by passing this amendment, it's allowing the developer to develop this commercial use in a neighborhood today with the ideology that should additional uses occur, that we would go ahead and follow access management policy as it stands today, even though that would occur into the future. So that's why I introduced it, Councilwoman Ward.
And I would just add to what Councilman Beckus said. Just like with any of our deviations, just like the one that's on, on the agenda today, it does ultimately come back to city council for, I make the, the initial decision, but then it does, there is that opportunity to come back and land before all of you, just like this one has here today. Thankfully, we don't have too many of those. We're able to usually work things out. But ultimately, the final, there is that path forward to the final decision makers being council. And that, like most of our, our policies, practices at the city, most of the final decisions on these have an appeal mechanism to come to council.
Thank you both. I'm not sure I asked it in the correct way, because from my point of view, there's not, it may have passed without any amendment. We don't know because we haven't voted yet. I mean, I'll put it in simple form. So we don't know that we needed this amendment. And I mean, I know that you've, you've recommended, and we have an appeal, but we don't, we haven't put it to a vote to know that this amendment is needed. So I guess I would take issue with the answers, because, you know, we're not even at that point. So it doesn't make any sense to me. And, and the other thing that I'm disappointed in is, I guess it goes both ways, but Mr. Hoppe hasn't seen your amendment, Mr. Beckus, and likewise. So if it's, that's the only missing piece, it seems to me, if you could get together and talk about the one component, or talk about it now, because we don't want it to link, you know, languish, right?
Count...
So, you know.
I think this was one that was discussed, and I think we were at an impasse, which is why it was brought here, at least informally.
It was brought to the council, but not to Mr. Hoppe.
Councilwoman Ward, let me be very clear with you. This is not a surprise. No, you addressed me, you asked me a question, I'm responding. This is not a surprise to Mr. Hoppe.
I didn't say it was a surprise.
I found out last Friday. No, it's not a surprise.
But about the second amendment, yeah.
But whatever the amendment is that's being proposed forward today, I've never seen.
That's what I'm talking about.
The one I saw last Friday included my home.
It has been emailed to Mr. Hoppe. He may not have seen it.
Huh?
Well, then tell him that.
He, I'm...
The floor is yours.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoppe has not asked me a question. So, but I will do that for you, Councilwoman Ward. Mr. Hoppe, I emailed you the amendment. You may not have gotten it. I was working to remove Lot 45 as we discussed verbally on the phone, or excuse me, verbally via email earlier today. I apologize that that has not...
With me?
Yes, emailed today. Yep.
Okay. The only email that happened before this meeting was you saying you were going to take Lot 45 out.
Yep.
And I think that came from Sandra.
No, the, well, I'm having a discussion here.
Huh?
So the, so the...
But that's all I've seen. You didn't send me the amendment.
And what the amendment was previous, you'd seen on Friday. The only change to that has been the removal of Lot 45.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll take your word on that, because I haven't seen it. Here's what my proposal says.
Point of order is right. Mr. Beckus, please be seated.
Here's what my proposal would say, just so you have it clearly in front of you. And it would put anyone in the future on notice that this would have to go to the L T U to be reviewed and follow the access management plan. But here's what I propose. Let's see. For any additional commercial floor area beyond that approved hereby, or any residential development on existing Lot 76 or Lot 77 I T, the access to South 84th Street for Lot 1 and Outlet A shall be subject to the then-existing asset management plan. So it would be in the plat that has that provision in it. So it would be clear to anyone in the future, hey, if I'm going to redevelop this, whether I sell it or not, it's in the plat. Whether, in the future, this property, when it's redeveloped, has to go... has to go through the asset management plan. Now, that seems to me a fair way to treat the deal, because in the future, we don't know what's gonna happen. And that would allow us to access or look at whatever the plan is at that time. I assume at that time, it goes to LTU for approval or denial of the exemption, and you can do it. We're saying fine. And if, but on the chance that you'll, the situation will be as we anticipate, probably less traffic and observable that it's not gonna issue, maybe you'll say, okay, that's better than going through a neighborhood of seniors or something, who knows? But that, that's our preference, and we think that takes the decision the right place at the right time. So...
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Other questions for Mr. Hoppy? Any other questions? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, can you remind me where we are? We have a motion on the floor with a second.
That's correct. We have Councilmember Beckus' motion on the table.
And there was a second.
By Washington.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess...
Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just see the process unfolding and it's working. We will be looking at an appeal of a requested deviation, so there's a process in place, a policy that says this should, that access off 84th Street should not be allowed. But we're gonna be looking at that deviation, and that's the process that works when we're looking at deviations or, I guess, changes in policy. So we're, we're very open as a council to entertain this. We haven't voted on it, yet we will be. And I see the same thing for this, for what we're talking about now, that there's a process in place, it can always be appealed to the city council, there's something being appealed to the city council on 7E, and we always have that option, Mr. Hoppy always has an option to come back. So I do believe that we are following a policy and a process in place to allow win-win situations for our constituents. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right. Okay, seeing none, please call the vote.
This is on the amendment.
This is on motion number two. Yes. The Beckus Amendment.
Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
No.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried four to three.
Okay, we can move on?
Is that the amendment?
Oh, yeah, yes, I beg your pardon.
I have a, I have a motion to amend number three. I did talk to Mr. Hoppy about it. It has to do with, and you all got copies of it earlier today, it has to do with increasing the landscape screening between the parking area and the residences to the south of the property. In reading through the plan, I saw the 33 parking spaces, and because this is a commercial use coming into a residential neighborhood, and it has been a typical practice of council or the planning commission to do so, I ask that we have 100% screening from the headlights going south. So basically, that we screen the parking lot or the parking area from, we screen the parking lot from the residential areas. And it's so much simpler in writing on the motion to amend number three than what I just said. Pardon me.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Oh, it's second. Did you, was yours already seconded?
Oh, my gosh. No, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay. And I do have a question.
Seconded by McGinnis, and you are recognized.
100% screening just along where?
The parking area.
In front of the...
On the south side of the building. So if you look at the plan for the, the existing house, the, and the additional...
The houses to the south?
The house that's there that's going to become a hotel.
And the church, right? No, it's just houses to the south.
Yeah, it's just houses, residential properties.
So it'd be between the parking lot and the houses to the...
I'm assuming on the property line.
So...
Inside the property, yeah. Mr. Hoppy's property, inside the property.
But you're not asking on the north side at all?
No.
Just on, just on the south side?
On the south side where the parking is.
And I assume we start at... I, I again, didn't see the amendment, so I don't know, but we start at the building, so we run from the, the essentially screen directly south of the house to directly south of the new building?
Yes.
Is that what it is, or is there further? Does it go further?
It's just to screen the parking, and I apologize. I was totally in a weird place without access to Wi-Fi this weekend, so we talked, and I don't think I got through.
We did talk, and I have no problem with screening south of the house and south of the new building.
There is some parking in front of the existing house. You would screen that too?
No, it's the south lot.
It'd be just this lot?
Yes, it's the south line that I'm trying to screen. There is no neighbors right on 84th Street that would be bothered by...
No, by the driveway.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to provide that additional screening, so that the neighbors that might become your neighbors that aren't there yet.
I've already had the discussion with my neighbors, I was gonna do that. So that's not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilwoman Washington, I have a question for you. Is 100% screening common?
It is. We've done this south of Pine Lake between the commercial area that includes businesses that, I don't know, I'm sorry, like a 27 Pine Lake on the south side, and the property further south, when they were building in a residential, it was initially a PUD, then it became an office complex, and then it went back. So there's, but we had 100% screening there, we've asked for it in a couple other locations. I'm so sorry, my brain just...
That's, but, but by definition, that's what we use?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. Thank you.
Is it your contemplation that would prohibit us from putting in medium-sized trees that will grow into that?
It's not 100% at the, it's not 100% on day one. They get to grow up into it.
You want the trees to grow in?
What kind of trees do you want planted?
They can be whatever.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
It can be shrubs and trees. I don't care.
Just joking. All right, let's move on. We have a motion and a second, a motion to amend number three and a second by McGinnis. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right.
We have the main motion. Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Okay. Move on to item 7E, Appeal of Request of Deviation from Access Management Policy Requirements for 1620 South 84th Street, introduced by Suarez.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Seeing none, please, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Okay. That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 8, Resolutions First Readings, our items 8A through 8C. Ordinances First Readings, and related resolutions to Section 9, Items 9A through 9F. Section 10 is our pending list, Items 10A through 10D.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
We are adjourned.